Um, they want to go get this, too, thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, it's June 13th, was called to order the meeting of the Long Beach City Council.
Councilwoman Zindejas?
Present.
Vice Mayor Allen?
Present.
Councilmember Duggan?
Here.
Councilman Supranov?
Here.
Councilwoman Kerr?
Present.
Councilwoman Sorrow?
Present.
Councilmember Yaranga?
Present.
Councilman Austin?
Here.
Councilmember Rixody?
Here.
Mayor Richardson?
I am here. We're going to ask Councilmembers Zindejas to lead us in a moment of silence and to pledge the flag.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, if you would join me in a moment of silence, in keeping in our hearts and our thoughts, those who are suffering from depression, anxiety, and who are suffering from different kinds of mental issues, and especially those who are contemplating suicide in this month of June, especially our LGBTQ plus youths. Thank you. If you would join me in a moment of silence to send them good thoughts. Thank you. At this time, if you can, please stand and join me for the flag salute. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
All right, thank you. Okay, so we're going to handle, we have a presentation. We'll report it, you know what, let's start off, let's report out from closed session. Let's get that out of the way now.
There is no report from closed session, thank you, Mayor.
Fantastic, thank you, because I always wait until like the second half of the meeting and then the attorney reminds me, we forgot to cloak the report out, so we got it, right at the beginning, Madam Cindy Attorney. So we have one presentation, we have our consent calendar, and then we're going to take on item 26, since we have a special guest with us this evening. So let's, let's hear the consent calendar, let's pull up the consent calendar first. Oh, actually, let's do the Employee of the Month presentation first. Pass it over to city staff, let's do that.
Thank you, Mayor Richardson, members of the council. I am pleased tonight to make our quarterly Employee of the Month awards. So I will start it off with our Employee of the Month for the month of May. Lizelle Estepono from the City Manager's Office is the April Employee of the Month. Lizelle started with the city in 2016 as an event coordinator one and photographer, city photographer. Lizelle is responsible for shooting all pictures in the city of Long Beach, which includes all of the management headshots, as well as countless groundbreaking events and other events that occur citywide. Lizelle is currently an events coordinator two. She's responsible for the occasional event permitting within the Office of Special Events and Filming. She also does citywide photography, and most importantly, she's responsible for the management of the city's special events and filming website, and also its social media platforms. Lizelle was an integral part of the COVID-19 response, working as part of the Joint Information Center, earning the city a finalist position for the governmental social media award Golden Post for Best Social Media in Customer Service, in response to the pandemic on social media. She is currently assisting with the homeless emergency as part of the Joint Information Center as well. So let's hear it for Lizelle. And this is a testament to her dedication and commitment. She's our city photographer, and she wants to take her own photo.
Yeah, we were just wondering, who's going to take a picture of the photographer?
I got a, I got a backup, I got a backup.
She is always on it. Okay, our next Employee of the Month is Alyssa Landeros from the Department of Financial Management. She's our April Employee of the Month. Alyssa? Okay. Over the past few months, Alyssa has been responsible for over 10 complex solicitations, including the Enterprise Land Management RFP, the Federal Legislative Representative Services RFP, and the Rapid Rehousing and Homeless Prevention RFP. Alyssa has trained the newest members of the buyer team. She's conducted hours of weekly testing of the recently upgraded financial reporting system, and she's delivered in-person training to various departments on the basics of purchasing. Additionally, she's coordinated all of the COVID disinfection cleaning citywide and was on call 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Alyssa successfully manages a substantial workload while continuing to build positive relationships with city department users, as well as our vendor community. Last month alone, her supervisor received four unsolicited comments about her great work. Two were from city of Long Beach staff that really appreciated her patience and her diligence during their solicitation process, and the other two were from vendors that approached her supervisor at a conference and described specifically Alyssa by name as a wonderful person to work with, always responsive, and extremely dependable. Let's hear it for Alyssa. Our next Employee of the Month is for the month of May. It's Fay Carter from the Disaster Preparedness and Emergency Communications Department. The Disaster Preparedness and Emergency Communications Department is proud to recognize Fay Carter, Administrative Coordinator, as its May 2023 Employee of the Month. Fay began her career with the city of Long Beach in 2002 as a clerk typist in the Harvard Department, and then, in 2003, began a 20-year career as a 911 public safety dispatcher. Moving up in the ranks, she served in many leadership positions, including as a trainer in the Communication Center Academy for New Recruits, as a member of the Tactical Dispatch Team, a Communication Center Supervisor, and she also holds an Emergency Medical Dispatcher certification. This month, Fay was promoted to the newly created position of Administrative Coordinator with the primary responsibility for the recruitment and retention of 911 dispatchers. Please join me in recognizing Fay Carter for her incredible work in the 911 Communication Center. Our next employee is Tina Schindeldecker from the City Attorney's Office. Tina started with the City Attorney's Office in 2001 as a temporary employee in the records section and became a full-time employee later that same year. She's worked in records for, she worked in records for two years and was then promoted to Liability Claims Assistant in 2003. As a Liability Claims Assistant, Tina provides administrative support to the principal deputy city attorney in the litigation division and three claims investigators. The City Attorney's Office typically receives more than 700 new government claims each year, and Tina is responsible for opening a file on each claim, ensuring that an investigator is assigned, and corresponding with claimants and maintaining the claim file, and also for notifying each claimant about the office's decision regarding their claim. Tina also helps coordinate having an investigator respond to incidents upon notification by the city's Emergency Communications Center. Tina has an enthusiastic, positive attitude. She puts team before self, and she is truly dedicated to providing excellent customer service as part of the claims process. Tina? Okay, now we'll move on to the month of June. Tracy Hall from the City Prosecutor's Office. Tracy Hall has worked for the city for over three decades, and she's worked for three different city prosecutors. She has handled many positions within the office and has directly, has been directly responsible for many of the Long Beach City Prosecutor's innovative programs. Ms. Hall helped start the Parent Accountability and Chronic Truancy Pact Program, which was designed to keep at-risk students in school through graduation. Working with the Long Beach Fire Department and LBUSD, Ms. Hall initiated the Rocket Academy Mentoring Program for 7th grade students. More recently, she was instrumental in creating the Law Enforcement Assistant Diversion Lead Program, a pre-booking diversion program. She's also greatly helped the development of the God Software Application, a police prosecutor database sharing platform that is the first of its kind in the nation. Finally, over the past decade, Ms. Hall has been responsible for developing and implementing the city's prosecutor's anti-human trafficking program. This work resulted in the City Prosecutor's Office being recognized with the Sherwood Prize for Combating Hate, presented by the Anti-Defamation League in 2016. Please join us in recognizing Tracy for her influential work and dedication to the city. And our next employee for the month of June is Joseph Rajigas Joswiak from Economic Development. The Economic Development Department is pleased to recognize Joseph, an administrative analyst, as its June 2023 Employee of the Month. Joseph has served in Economic Development since January 2022, bringing his strong project management skills from Price Waterhouse Coopers to take on the responsibility of supporting the Queen Mary and the Carnival Dome, as well as other leases and operations surrounding the Queen Mary. Joseph has played an instrumental role in coordinating reopening efforts at the Queen Mary by managing various restoration projects aboard the ship, working closely with city partner departments and the ship's staff to ensure that project deadlines met reopening requirements, while also assisting the, and assisting with managing the Carnival Dome. Joseph's role at the Queen Mary requires coordination, relationship building, and project and asset management with corporate leaderships, media contacts, business owners, state and local agencies, and city partner departments. Joseph managed challenges and potential pitfalls, working closely with partners to ensure the Queen Mary reopened on time and in a safe and quality condition, ensuring that the city and our partners' Evolution Hospitality could provide unique experiences and amenities to the Queen Mary's guests in 2023. Please join me in recognizing Joseph for his incredible work and dedication. That concludes our presentation. Thank you, Mayor.
Let's hear it for our hard-working and dedicated public employees. And although we're doing Employee of the Month, Linda is our City Manager of the Night, because it is award season, our city manager had some personal priorities this evening. So congratulations to all of you, thank you. Let's, let's handle the consent calendar quickly. Okay, is there a motion and a second on the consent calendar? And there's a request to pull item eight, and we'll move that to later. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any public comment on consent?
Item 10 will also be pulled.
Yes, item 10 will also be, be pulled and be resubmitted for a future agenda. That's right. So minus eight and 10. Is there any public comment here? Seeing none, members, please cast your vote. We will hold over item eight until after item 26. All right, let's queue up item 26, please. Item 26.
Consent items that have been pulled off, the consent need to be heard right after consent.
Okay, so let's hear item number eight, then.
Report from City Manager, recommendation to review and approve the 2023 Office of Climate Action and Sustainability Work Plan citywide.
Okay, so the request is for a staff presentation, but we do have a time certain on, on item 26, since we have a guest speaker. So we can just have a brief presentation on this?
Sure, Mayor, I'd like to introduce our Deputy City Manager, Meredith Reynolds. She is also the manager of the city's Climate Action Bureau. So Meredith, she'll make a brief presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight, in front of you is a recommendation to review and approve the 2023 Office of Climate Action Sustainability Work Plan. And the action before you is due to a sustainable city commission ordinance that was adopted by city council on May 15, 2007, which requires that each year the commission shall prepare a work program outlining the focus for the commission for review and approval by the city council. In 2008, the Office of Sustainability was created in the City Manager's Office to facilitate this process of sustainability throughout the city. And I can say, being a part of that office, our first task was to establish a sustainable city action plan, which was produced and adopted by the city council in February 2010. This comprehensive citywide framework for creating a sustainable city really helped guide the city's operational and policy decisions for 10 years. And the city, through our partner departments and the Office of Sustainability, worked to achieve a high level of energy efficiency, water conservation, improved air quality, and overall city sustainability, resulting in things like 18 lead city facilities, 71 private facilities, over 9,000 trees planted, 44 megawatts of solar installations, 168 miles of bike lanes, 3,600 lawn-to-garden transformations, and a 30% reduction in per capita water use in the city. With the city council adopting the city's first climate action plan in August of 2022, and also voted to provide structural funding for the Office of Climate Action and Sustainability in October, this has provided a new focus on climate action for staff and the commission. Commission and staff have embraced the goals outlined in Long Beach Climate Action Plan and have used this plan as a basis for the work program for review and approval for you this evening. The work plan includes multiple actions to be taken during the 2023 calendar year, incorporating actions from the Long Beach Climate Action Plan, as the office now includes that scope. Some of the work focuses on building the internal team and city working groups necessary for this work, while other work aspects of the work plan focus on implementing cap actions and identified those that are specific to the office, as well as other city departments. In addition to being consistent with the cap, the work plan also provides a holistic approach to sustainability and will be used as a guide for our office. The work plan calls for things like establishing the new office, filling new and existing vacancies, and comprehensively merging our team responsibilities, developing interdepartmental cap implementation working groups, targeting grant funding to bring more county, state, and federal funding here to Long Beach, and incorporating some of those actions in our legislative agenda, which you will see as part of that process, establishing staff communications and training to increase awareness and support for our climate action plan, continuing and expanding public programs, restoration field work, direct install and rebate programs, and also expanding engagement and community partnerships with our partners throughout city. The 2023 Office of Climate Action Sustainability Work Plan was unanimously approved by the commission on April 27, 2023, and in accordance with the ordinance is being submitted for city council review and approval. That concludes the presentation, and I'm available for any questions that you might have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Zindejas?
Thank you. Just wanted to thank city staff for all the wonderful work that they've been doing on making sure that we're being, we're building a greener and more sustainable future for Long Beach. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Rixody?
I'll be brief. I ditto what my council, council colleague just said, and the reason I pulled this off the consent is I just know how much work went into the Long Beach cap, and I thought the fact that we're now doing, moving to the work plan implementation process was just something important for our community to see that we're moving forward with implementing this, so.
All right, thank you. Is there any public comment here? Members, please cast your vote.
Motion is carried.
All right, thank you. Let's move to item 26, please. Item 10. Oh, there's one more, that's right, item 10. No, that's continued to another. Do we have to vote to do that?
Is item 10 being continued?
Item, item 10 was pulled, correct?
Pulled to be heard by?
That is correct, it's being pulled.
So we don't need to hear it?
It is being, I think that the official action is that it's being continued.
Okay, so we do need to hear item 10 to vote to continue with.
Report from fire, recommendation to authorize city manager to execute an agreement with LBCC to allow enrolled students to implement a ride-along program for emergency medical service students citywide.
Thank you, is there a second? Okay, Councilman Austin, your motion?
I'm motioning to continue this item.
Okay, thank you. Is there any public comment? Members, please cast your vote. Thank you.
Councilwoman Sorrow? Councilwoman Saro? Motion is carried.
All right, thank you. Item twenty-six for real this time.
Report from Economic Development, Health and Human Services and Public Works, recommendation to authorize City Manager to execute a purchase and sale agreement and escrow instructions with the Long Beach Rescue Mission Foundation for the purchase of property located at seven oh two West Anaheim Street in an amount not to exceed seven point five million, and accept the categorical exemption District One.
All right, thank you. So this is some important work that we're doing tonight on the City Council. Tonight, we're considering the purchase of the old Rescue Mission facility at seven oh two Anaheim Street, the old headquarters, the West Coast Choppers. Since the state of emergency was declared in January, we've managed to greatly expand our capacity to do outreach and to provide temporary shelter beds and interim housing units, and to expand services to get people on a path towards stability and safety. And one of our most critical tools has been the city's ability to operate a winter shelter program. For years, we know that we've jumped between different parts of town with the winter shelter program and spent months identifying a facility that would be able to serve as a suitable location. And so a key goal of our short, medium, long-term priorities has been to identify a permanent location and expand interim housing in our city, interim shelter in our city. Tonight, we're going to hear a presentation from staff, and we're going to hear from our county supervisor about partnership that's come together to really make this opportunity possible. So we're going to hear the presentation, and then I'm going to invite up our supervisor before we go to council comments. So those pass it to staff. Thank you.
I'd just like to thank the mayor for those comments that kind of framed the city's involvement in this project. It is a critical part of the city's homelessness response, and we will be using this facility for a shelter and many other services. And I'd like to turn it over to our Economic Development Director, Beau Martinez, to talk a little bit about this project.
Thank you, Linda. Mayor, City Council, Beau Martinez, Director of Economic Development. In the lead-up to the city's emergency proclamation, a homeless city saw a historic increase in people experiencing homelessness and the demand for beds to continue to exceed available resources. In December 2022, an emergency winter shelter was set up in East Long Beach at a community hospital with eighty-one beds, and it quickly filled capacity within a week. Following the city's emergency proclamation in 2023, adding shelter capacity was identified as a top priority to meet this growing need in our community. With the lease for emergency shelter at community hospitals ending on April twenty-eighth, 2023, the city quickly identified an alternative site to ensure continuity services for participants, and short-term lease was negotiated under emergency orders for the seven oh two Anaheim property. The proclamation helped to establish operations and transition participants from community hospital to the rescue mission site without a gap in services, and it was done not only in an expedient manner, but also in record time. The city was able to execute lease for interim operations at the site through authorities under the emergency proclamation, while continuing to pursue options to purchase the site. Under the city's emergency proclamation, the city established the following commitments: engaging community members in neighborhoods immediately impacted by the new site, ensuring that potential sites do not have current programming, leaving the site better than how we found it, and evaluating site availability across the city. We also conducted lots of community engagement. Leading up to the temporary lease at seven oh two Anaheim, the city conducted outreach to surrounding neighborhoods in person, via email, phone calls, with nearly fifty businesses, four nonprofits, and three neighborhood associations participating in these conversations. The city also convened an informational session on April thirteenth with approximately eighty community participants. During the community outreach process, there was overwhelming support for temporary lease, and it ended convening that this informal poll showed clear community interest in acquiring the property as a permanent resource for people experiencing homelessness. On January thirty-first, the city formally requested support and resources from L.A. County to assist in the city's emergency actions. L.A. County CEO Fisha Davenport and Supervisor Janice Hahn were excited to support the city and met the mayor and city manager to develop a plan to expand shelter capacity, as well as provide future funding. Under their own emergency authorities, the county executed an agreement for up to six point five million dollars in funding to help the city acquire and renovate the seven oh two West Anaheim property. The property information is, the ownership is by Long Beach Rescue Mission. It's approximately fifty-one thousand eight hundred thirty-two square feet lot with twenty-six thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven square feet of buildings. The proposed use is a year-round shelter, also will serve as an annual winter shelter. Needed improvements are heating and air conditioning, ADA accessibility, showers, additional restrooms, and sewer connections. On-site activities will include the Long Beach Rescue Mission offices and storage, as well as environmental remediation. And with that, I'd like to have Eric Lopez, Director of Public Works, talking about some of the environmental.
Thank you, Beau. We took a look at the site, and we did, we are aware of chemical releases to both soil and groundwater that have been remediated. There's actually has been remediation at this site for about twenty years under the oversight of the Los Angeles Regional Water Quality Control Board. There has been improvements over the years, but we do expect remediation to continue, and we will continue monitoring it to make sure that it is fully addressed as required by the regulatory agencies. The responsible party of record for this contamination is Aramark Corporation, and we will continue working with them to ensure that the required actions are performed. In addition, the city did conduct an indoor air quality assessment test out of an abundance of caution. We just wanted to make sure that things were good. We did find some areas of improvement, and that's where additional controls and enhancements to the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning systems will help address some potential concerns. The capital improvement plan does include a brand-new HVAC system, so it will all be incorporated into that system. The city expects the responsible party to continue remediation efforts until it is fully addressed. In the unlikely event that the responsible party stops performing remediation, then the city could be liable for continued remediation as the property owner. Existing contamination and remediation activities are not expected to affect the proposed operations at the subject property. Beau?
Thank you, Eric. So the total project cost is approximately thirteen point two million for acquisition and tenant improvements, six point five million from Los Angeles County on a one-to-one match, six point seven million with a city match. The city match source of funds include one million dollars from the general fund, which will be anticipated through surplus, Measure A funds of four million for acquisition and TIs, and one point seven million for planned contingencies. As we start to conclude this presentation, we want to say how proud we are and how quickly responded to not only this emergency shelter situation, but also providing a winter shelter, moving to seven oh two Anaheim to actually do a short-term lease, and then quickly moving forward as we are looking forward to acquire this building for future use. And we really have done this in record time. Typically, these type of projects take nine to twelve months, but we've done all our due diligence and work within ninety days. And so I'm very proud, very proud, and a big thank you to our city staff and departments, Los Angeles County, community stakeholders, Mayor and City Council for your leadership as we continue to raise the bar and make significant strides towards addressing homelessness throughout our community. As Mayor Rex Richardson outlined in his Opportunity Beach Agenda, we are all in with the goal of providing quality and stable housing for all. So with that, the recommendation is to authorize the City Manager as a deputy to execute any and all documents necessary, including the purchase and sale agreement and escrow instructions with the Long Beach Rescue Mission Foundation, Inc., a California public benefit corporation, arts society for the purchase of certain real property at seven oh two West Anaheim Street, parcel number seven two seven one dash zero zero five dash zero nine in an amount not to exceed seven point five million. Accept the categorical exemption CE two-three dash zero eight zero and increase appropriations in the general fund group and the economic development by seven point five million for acquisition costs, offset by three point seven five million funded to be received from the County of Los Angeles Chief Executive Office, one million from the general fund group funds available, and two point seven five million transfer of Measure A funding from Capital Projects Fund Group District One. In addition to that, while all the major terms and conditions of the proposed purchase agreement have been tenderly agreed upon by the parties, the city has not received final revisions to the proposed agreement from the seller. Approval by council will be conditioned upon the parties concluding negotiations of a purchase agreement reasonably acceptable to the city staff and city attorney. With that, that concludes my presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. So this is a few comments, and then I'm going to invite the supervisor up. So first, I want to underscore what staff mentioned about how quick this partnership came together. You know, the first time that we did a shelter in the city was up in North Long Beach. It took nearly a year to assemble the funding and to get to a place where we could deliver a shelter and, you know, comparable size, and there was no building. And so in this situation, the declaration of emergency has allowed us to move together and move fast and coordinate with other agencies with focus and urgency. Secondly, it's really important that we uplift Councilwoman Mary Zindeh Haas's leadership and the First District community that was not only supportive but enthusiastic about long-term solutions and permanent interim shelter. And that concept of permanent interim may seem like oxymoron, but folks know what we're talking about. Interim shelter should be something that we plan for as a part of our overall housing mix. It shouldn't be something that's an emergency. And every year, we declare a state of emergency every single year during the winter to place a winter shelter. We know that we're a big city. We know that we're going to have challenges during the cold months, so we should plan for that permanently. I also want to recognize the Long Beach Rescue Mission. Their willingness to partner with the city of Long Beach on this site, as evidenced by the fact that we have a temporary shelter there today that's working for us, and their, you know, good faith negotiation with the city allows us to not only move quickly, but to make sure we're also investing in our Long Beach Rescue Mission, because they have goals and plans to expand their footprint in the city of Long Beach and expand more shelters. So through this partnership, we have a unique opportunity to recycle these limited dollars that we do have, recycle these dollars, and ultimately expand more shelter capacity than what we're doing today. And then finally, when we reached out originally to the county, we sat down with our county supervisor and her team. I remember Ivan, I remember Chico, I remember your whole team came. And then the county CEO was there as well, and we gave a whole long list of things. And we were initially concerned about, hey, are we asking for too much here? But they didn't hesitate. The county stepped up, and, you know, and I remember the call, and I'll defer to the supervisor to tell that story, but they effectively, you know, asked for the full price with improvements and offered to split it. Can we just split it? And to have a conversation across agencies about that level of partnership, it's refreshing and to know that the city's not alone. When we declare a state of emergency, say it's important focus, to have a partner in our county supervisor and the leadership of the county to say, we're in this with you, we have skin in the game, it's really reassuring to the city. So I really want to just acknowledge L.A. County Supervisor Janice Hahn. And so now we're enabled to do this, and we're able to take the necessary steps to acquire the property, to make it a permanent home of our emergency winter shelter program, and have opportunities year-round for additional opportunities, since this is a larger site than we historically used. And, you know, I want to underscore that I know we have challenges with homelessness, but these are examples of being able to work together and partner to make a real difference. And when we invest in dignity for those unhoused neighbors, we also are investing in quality of life for all of us, because there's a direct connection between our ability to provide shelter and our ability to make sure that our public rights ways and our parks and our business districts, you know, have adequate resources to ensure that they are safe and clean. And so there's a direct connection. The work we do tonight allows us to do more. That said, I would like to invite up our county supervisor, who had took time out of her busy schedule. When you have, I borrow this from Councilmember Kerr, when you have a big check like that, you better show up. Make sure they know who's bringing that big check.
Well, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Richardson and esteemed council members. I'm here tonight to obviously bring some money to the table, but I really want to come here tonight and applaud you, right? I want to applaud you, Mayor Richardson, and your council for your willingness to address this homelessness crisis head-on. Because I will admit, there are cities in the county, some in my own district, who've not stepped up to be part of the solution. They continually tell me what the problem is, but don't want to be part of the solution. And Long Beach has demonstrated leadership time and time again, investing in services for the unhoused, making interim shelter available, building permanent supportive housing, so we can lift people out of homelessness. And I hope more cities in the County of Los Angeles look to Long Beach, look to you as a shining example of what can be done to meet this moment and be part of the solution instead of part of the problem. When I came into office in 2016, I told all my cities in my supervisory district, if you're willing to step up, particularly with interim shelter proposals, I will help you get the funding that you need to make that happen. So you're right, you heard all this incredible, good work staff on everything, but let me just tell you how it went down. Mayor Rex called me up and told me about this opportunity to purchase Union Rescue Mission, gave me this big amount, and I said, why don't we split it? And he said yes. And then I went, oh, gosh, now I have to go find the money. But that's what we did. And then I worked with our CEO in the County of Los Angeles, Fisha Davenport, to get six point five million in Measure H dollars headed your way to purchase this property, as well as help pay for some of the renovations, so it can be that high-quality interim shelter that Long Beach needs at this moment. And having a large, permanent interim shelter will be an asset for you as we address this issue countywide. You know, when someone is ready to leave an encampment and come inside, and sometimes it's, we have one chance or one moment when that person is finally ready, we can't be in a position where we say, sorry, there's not a bed available tonight, because we might lose that person, really. Sometimes just the circumstances are right with the outreach workers, and the person has got to the end of their rope, and they're ready to come inside. This is going to make that possible. If we're going to get a handle on the homelessness crisis, we need reliable interim shelter beds that you can use at a moment's notice to help a person get off the street. I really also want to applaud Councilwoman Mary Zindeh Haas. Thank you for your leadership in this project and your willingness not to only embrace having this interim shelter in your district, but bringing along your community. And it was great listening to the staff talk about the efforts, but you were really the leader there. And I've heard you talk about why that was so important for you to make sure that the community, the neighborhood around this, also embraced your vision. And it's a project that I think your residents will be able to get behind, and that is in no small part to your willingness to do that. I am so proud to represent Long Beach on the Board of Supervisors. I think your city is doing such important work, and I stand ready to be your partner on this project, but really, and the necessary hard work that we're going to have to continue to do to really address this problem. But you are, again, one of the best partners I have, and I hope that you all vote to approve this agenda item tonight, and I hope you will accept this.
All right.
So, thank you.
Thank you so much. This is here for County Supervisor Janice Hahn. Thank you so much. Okay, now we'll take it back behind the rail and handle our business. Councilwomen Zindejas.
Thank you so much, Mayor. This is so exciting to be here today and have this item in front of us today. As we all know, this is a huge acquisition for us as a city as a whole, so I'm very, very happy to see this come forward. There is a huge, huge need for housing and for shelter. Our acquisition and use of this property will allow us to continue to provide much-needed relief to our residents who are unhoused. It will offer a safe, secured sleeping environment for people to rest their heads at, and have case management services to help get them back on their feet and connect it to permanent housing. I want to absolutely express my thanks to the District One residents who not only embrace this, but like Supervisor Janice Hahn said, but also ask for something like this, ask for something more permanent to be able to help our unhoused. So I want to thank them for that. I want to sincerely thank Supervisor Janice Hahn, one, for being here today and for knowing how important this item is for us, and for going out there and finding that money for us. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And to your entire board of supervisor, because I know we couldn't do it without their commitment to this effort as well. Thank you, Mayor, and a big, big, big thank you to my fellow council colleagues for their continuous support on this, and for all of us working together to, like you said, to really, really make an impact on the crisis that we are facing today with homelessness. I am honored to welcome this new city asset to our community, because it will be an asset for the whole city as a whole. And thank you again. I just can't thank you enough. All of you, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Kerr.
Yes, this is great news tonight. We know that the purpose of the emergency declaration in our city and in the county and surrounding cities was to increase bed availability, so fewer people are sleeping on our streets at night. And this enables us to do just that. It gets to the heart of it. We need more beds, and this does that. I look forward to the opportunities to expand services as funding and space allows on this campus. There is so much potential for doing even more as we go into the future, and it couldn't be done without the collaboration and leadership at the county level. Thank you, Supervisor Hahn, and to your colleagues on the board for supporting us and partnering us in this important work. And also thanks to you, to the community who voted for Measure H. This is real dollars in action, getting folks off the street. We know that services are most effective when we approach people and they say yes, and we have a place for them to go. Supervisor Hahn said it perfectly, that that moment is critical. When there's a yes and a bed, that's where the magic happens, and it gets folks into transitional housing and on the road to permanent supportive housing in their future. I want to thank the residents of District One and Councilwoman Zindejas for welcoming these neighbors into their community enthusiastically, with compassion, and with support. It's a good day for the community, and I'm grateful to be a part of it.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. Just what a great day here in Long Beach. And I have to say, thank you, Beau, thank you, Kelly, and Eric, for all of your work on this item. I know the speed and precision that this happened, and you put this deal together, was absolutely, you know, incredible. I know, you know, sometimes you just have perfect timing and perfect execution, and it gives us all exactly what we needed, a permanent location for homeless services outside of the MSC. And through this acquisition, we're able to increase access to interim housing and just ultimately be in a better position to connect more folks to housing. And we're also able to give people all the services they depend on, whether it's case management, a shower, three meals a day on a year-around basis, and that is incredible. I can't say thank you enough to Councilwoman Zindejas. She was a hero in just really making this happen. And then also Mayor Rex Richardson, I mean, making phone calls, getting deals done. You're incredible. You're a leader on this. You're a rock star. And Supervisor Hahn, I mean, we just couldn't thank you enough. You are also a super rock star, and so we appreciate you being here. We appreciate all that you have done to make this happen. It's just a great team effort by everyone. Good job.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Next is Councilwoman Sorrow.
Thank you, Mayor. I definitely want to add to what my colleagues share around Supervisor Hahn unwavering commitment, truly demonstrating it through the dollars that she's presented to us from Measure H, thanks to voters. And her commitment to make sure that we not only get dollars as far as a shelter, but ongoing program that's been provided throughout, you know, really for many years in ways that we can address and attack how to reduce homelessness. So I just want to send my gratitude to the supervisor, as well as to staff here, Eric and Kelly and Beau, as well as Councilwoman Zindejas for hosting the site in her district, because it's such a relief, because every year, every council member's like, all right, is it going to be in my district this year? How are we going to do our education? So not only is it a permanent place that people will have beds to rest in and to find shelter, and hopefully being on a pathway to transitional, to permanent housing, is that it saves us a lot of time from having to do education and communication around where the shelter goes every year. So, and that means just more time to be able to serve those that are unhoused and staff time in doing other important work. I also want to obviously thank our mayor for really being a champion for putting forward this local emergency initiative. First day he came on board, one of the first thing he wanted to make sure we addressed, and we're seeing it now. And I'm just so proud of our city and I'm proud of our supervisor and our partnership to demonstrate that what is possible when we really think creatively, and that we can move fast on taking action. Lastly, while it's not connected to this item, I also want to thank Supervisor Hahn for her commitment to reducing and ending gun violence. She recently hosted a gun buyback in my district in MacArthur Park, where 293 guns were taken off the street, and that's just amazing. I want us to give her a round of applause for doing that. Thank you for hosting it. Thank you for getting those guns off of our street. Anyway, just like my colleagues, I can't thank you enough.
Thank you. Councilmember Exote.
Thank you. I'll be brief. I just wanted to highlight the fact that, you know, inter-agency collaborations like this are often difficult to negotiate, right? So when you hear how much synergy there was to accomplish this, I really think just reiterates what we can all do to accomplish this goal, when we're all working together, moving in the same direction, and as our mayor always says, we are all in, right? It's a win for our community, it's a win for our city, it's a win for our county. And so I really just want to thank you Supervisor Hahn for, just your willingness to collaborate, right, and just recognizing the partnership that you have here at the City of Long Beach, and the fact that we want to be helpful, right, and you want to partner with us in order to achieve our shared goals. I want to thank our mayor, I want to thank Councilwoman Zindejas for her leadership, and just all of our city staff that really worked together. It was a collaborative effort, and I just say kudos.
Thank you. Councilman Austin.
So I don't know that I can say anything that hasn't already been said, but I'm going to do my best to just say thank you and welcome Supervisor Hahn. This is certainly a win-win project and an opportunity that will increase our ability as a city and as a county to provide shelter for unhoused individuals. I think this action is bold, and it shouldn't be lost on us that it's in response to an emergency crisis both declared by this city council and the county. And so this is a win-win. And so I join in the chorus of appreciation for the leadership displayed by our mayor, as well as you, and I'm gratitude to the entire state of, I'm sorry, Board of Supervisors for their support in this action. It shows a real commitment and that we are, this is an issue that is very important and serious to us all. So this is a win. This, tonight, we'll celebrate, but we understand that we still have a whole lot of work in front of us to deal with this serious crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Supanaw.
Thank you first to Councilwoman Zindejas for stepping up to make this happen. Thank you Supervisor Hahn for your support. From one Fourth District representative to another, may I say, go forth. We just got an email today asking some questions about the detail, so I'd just like, staff, if you can give us one or two sentences, how this works, how this replaces the winter shelter. Can you give a real brief overview on that?
Yeah, so every year, we have spent time looking for a winter shelter location, and so what this will allow us to do is maintain a year-round shelter of about the same size as about the, with the ability to expand, though we're not sure exactly to how many beds yet, during the winter shelter as well. So during wet and cold weather, we will be able to expand, so the more of the winter shelter part, but it has year-round capacity right now for 85 beds ongoing.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sorrow.
Yes, I also want to thank LBPD for partnering Supervisor Hahn for doing the gun buyback. I didn't mention it earlier. Thank you, LBPD.
Thank you. Councilmember Yoraga.
Before I make a comment, can I see that check again? I just got one thing to say. Thank you.
Fantastic, thank you. Councilmember Duggan.
I just want to express my thanks and support for this. We need this in our city. And staff for doing all this work to make it happen quickly, and for Councilwoman Zindejas. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. That satisfies council comment. We have eight members of the public signed up to speak. Please come forward, Thomas Moreau. And after Thomas is Pam, and then Gary Shelton.
Hi, thanks for giving me this time, and congratulations on today. I work directly across the street from this shelter, so I'm there eight to five or more, five days a week. And since the shelter was implemented, we've seen an uptick in the crime and nuisance and kind of general filth of the area. I've heard the word "safe and clean" used quite a bit today, which is perfect. Those are great goals. I'm just asking you to not forget the existing neighborhood, which is currently anything but safe and clean. On a daily basis, there are people urinating in the street, defecating in the street, including, by the way, one of the security guards from the shelter. We have a photograph of him urinating on a dumpster. It's probably because the porta-potties they've set up are overflowing, and the street smells like urine. The shelter's great. I would just ask that you address the existing neighborhood and keep a lid on what's going on, and maybe we can all get along.
Thank you.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Pam Chotswati. After Pam is Gary Shelton, then Nat.
Thank you. Hello, Mayor Richardson, city council members, city attorney, city manager, and city staff, and Supervisor Hahn. My name is Pam Chotswati. I'm a 20-year Long Beach resident. I live at the top of District Two in Zafaria neighborhood for the last 10 years. I'm also part of Project Dignity in our own MacArthur Park. And I just want to commend you, and I support this item, and the purchase of 702 Anaheim as a permanent year-round shelter. It's an action in the right direction for acquiring needed facilities to address homelessness. And thank you for the collaboration between the city and the county, which never happens. So thank you for that. I just want to say, please consider community programming outside of casework and job training emplacements, such as peer-led support groups and programs, because it's often difficult to learn when you're in therapy or you're in rehabilitation while you're housed, let alone when you're unhoused. Peer-led groups have had evidence-based success more than its counterparts, and addressing these solutions at the root and core of this complex issue is essential. But thank you for your work. We are really grateful.
Thank you so much. Next is Gary Shelton, then Nat, then Alex.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, and council members, and Supervisor Hahn. You might remember in the olden days, at the top of the steps of St. Anthony's. I translated for you and for Congressman Lowenthal one day. Didn't have a beard then. Good to see you again. So I also, for the folks that I don't know or who don't know me, I wanted to let you know that I served for eight or nine years on the city's Homeless Services Advisory Committee, and I also served for four or five years on community development. And for the past 25 years, homelessness and housing have been my bailiwick, as far as what I try to support. This is a really, really popular item. West Coast choppers, it seems like it's been destined for this as its new life for a long, long time. I think it's so popular that it might be able to withstand a couple of questions that might sound more like critiques. But Councilwoman Zindejas, I hope that when I pose these questions, they don't have to answer my questions, but they do have to answer them if you ask them for me. So the first thing I wanted to mention was that I've watched, as the city has done a handful of motel conversions, which also included remediation. And what I calculate, if we have 85 beds, and the cost of this project, that's about $250,000, about a quarter of a million dollars per bed. And my awareness of the previous costs of these other remediations and conversions have been that this is perhaps a new normal, but it's a step above in the price per bed of shelter beds. Then the other is the question of adding shelter capacity, and I was really pleased to hear Director Collopy mention that they hope that there will be additional capacity next winter when the time rolls around, but I don't know when we'll learn about how those plans will be. But one facet of that is that the winter shelter, and I believe the way it just operated at 702 West Anaheim, was with limited walk-up access, perhaps not even any walk-up access. And so how will that blend next year when we have 85 new beds just for the winter shelter capacity? And those people, will they still be bussed in while other people aren't? Just, I'm curious how that might work. So the questions would be, is $250,000 the new price for a bed of shelter? And how will the 85 extra people next year at the winter shelter arrive at the door? But thank you, and I'm sure this will pass, but I think those are piercing questions we might see asked out in the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Nat, then Alex, then Laura. Please come forward.
Mayor, esteemed council members, as a resident of Long Beach, concerned about the criminalization of our unhoused community, I commend you for your decision and dedication in addressing the housing crisis, and I support this decision to build a new and permanent shelter. I want to thank you all, and of course, thanks Supervisor Hahn. This presents a valuable opportunity to create a safe and supportive environment for the unhoused. And as we embark on this journey to rebuild our community, let's embody the values that define Long Beach, while also critically examining the contradiction of simultaneously building housing while engaging in sleeping practices, removing the very people for whom this shelter is intended. And in response to the first public comment given today in regard to filth, be patient. We must continue to advocate for comprehensive measures that prioritize housing security, mental health support, and opportunities for gainful employment. And in doing so, Long Beach right now is sending a powerful message that we refuse to marginalize or neglect our unhoused friends, neighbors, and family. Let's keep this focus on efforts to develop inclusive policies that offer real solutions, where safe, secure housing isn't a privilege, but a human right. Mayor, esteemed council members, Supervisor Hahn, this step is one of many I am so proud to stand behind, and I ask you to please approve this agenda item. Let's take these steps together, driven by the unwavering conviction that every individual deserves dignity, respect, and the opportunity to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Alex, then Laura, then Lee Charlie.
Hi, council members and mayor. I support this measure. It's my first time speaking here, so I'm kind of nervous, but I think it's important. I support this measure. I think it's really important that we provide housing across the board. I just think people need to be able to feel that they're in a community I just think people need to be able to feel that they're in a community that doesn't want to criminalize them or kick them out or put them in jail. And so I think that, you know, this is really great. You know, I appreciate everyone that was involved in making this happen, but I think the city can do more. And I think that we need to not contradict ourselves when we do these things, then we can't go and do other things that criminalize our neighbors. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Laura, then Lee Charlie, then Scott. Please come forward.
I support this acquisition for the use of a permanent year-round shelter. It makes sense. We're seeing that houselessness continues to be on the rise, and I appreciate that the city is taking this seriously by having an emergency proclamation in place. While the shelter will provide a temporary stay for unhoused community members, I implore you to take a holistic approach as you address the root causes of houselessness, like lack of rent control and tenant protections, low wages, lack of mental health services, and other social programs that help communities thrive. This purchase sounds like a really exciting plan, and I encourage you to involve the unhoused community in the planning as you implement it. Thank you. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Next is Lee Charlie, and then final speaker is Scott.
Thank you. I want to say that I was one of the 80 community members that attended the April 13th meeting, and I want to say that the head is blown, mind-boggled how quickly this came to effect and how impressive it is, and I want to say it's quite amazing. Eighty of us, maybe even more, were like, okay, Rex Richardson, Mayor Richardson said, "I'm going to make it happen. If y'all all raise your hand, I'll make it happen." He said that, and we're all like, okay. Not even 60 days later, the city owns it, and it's just mind-boggling. And I have new respect for, I can't even say how underscored, how amazing it is. Listen, two months we all voted at this April 13th. It's actually two months to the day, and now it's cities. So I just think that's impressive and amazing, and thank you. Also, I live maybe five streets away from this shelter, and I see that the unhoused are getting excited about it. They now know that the multi-service center is like right across the way. They're so close to each other that they can partner. And I know that as a former homeless person in a shelter, as the city works on it, every shelter I've ever stayed in has bunk beds, and this only has cots. So maybe eventually we can add beds. And there's so much potential that this shelter can do. And I'm going to tell you, I know almost all the homeless along the riverbed, and now they can walk to the multi-service center, and then they can walk across the street and now see that the shelter is a goal that they want to go to instead of living in a tent and getting eaten up by rats and filth. And so I think that it's super, super important, the proximity of how close it is. And then also, I think that we, in the 1st District, we have the Long Beach Rescue Mission, and they rely on funds and donations, and they do so much, so much for our community, and they're very active, and now they're going to benefit. And I know they have the Lydia House, they help the women's, they help people get off drug and addiction, and now the Long Beach Rescue Mission can like do so much more for our community. And I just want to say thank you to everybody, and I'm just super excited, and I'm really blown away how this is actually happening. So thank you so much.
All right, thank you. And our final speaker is Scott.
Scott, District Two. I'm here today to voice my support for making the new shelter building at 702 West Anaheim a permanent location. The effort to expand shelter space in Long Beach is a step in the right direction, but it, of course, is not a solution. As rents continue to rise across the city, county, and state, the only lasting answer to the present housing crisis will be affordable housing and more of it. I urge the council to continue to utilize the powers granted to it through the emergency proclamation, to produce housing-first options, to stem the rise of homelessness in our city, and to give our unhoused neighbors and others experiencing housing insecurity safe, dignified, and permanent housing. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Well, that satisfies public comment. Let's get on with the vote.
Okay. All right, just a moment. We'll take, we'll take your public comment. Can we help them out?
At least we give them something. Thank you. I do give them something to eat, this way they have something. Not much, but they, you know, they like it, and they come to the house, and you know what, we like giving them something because, you know, it's hard for them. And then with this money out there, because I'd like to have, what you call it, a resource center. They got this resource center right there, Walmart, and it's empty, and we could build something for the homeless, veterans, and civilians. But you know, that's what we need, because there's a lot of money that's going through, but there's not being taken care of. People not being taken care of, so it's hard, but we do not let nobody down. And I know they should be taking care of. And yeah, how many houses you got? I asked. You don't want to answer that?
Continue, sir. You have 15 seconds left.
But anyway, you don't let nobody down, even if they're homeless and they're down, you gotta think about the human people, you know, because that's the way, you know, we're all together, and you're helping, no matter what. Even, like I said, even a scrambled egg and a bagel, that'll help. And I'm so glad, because me and my wife, we will give that or whatever we have, and there's nobody, we don't turn nobody down, nobody down. There's so much money going through. I wish you guys, you know, do something, and not to ship them out to Carolina, going to ship them out to freaking Ireland. I mean, what, you're not doing nothing. You're not doing nothing for them. You're just throwing them away to another place. It's not right. You're not supposed to do that. You're supposed to take care of your home front. That's what I gotta say, you know. And it's a shame, because as councilpeople, especially you, Zindejas, you should know better, unless you got one house or two houses where you don't give a flying fuck. But you know, you should know better, but you know, don't because you know you've been homeless. But you know what?
Thank you so much for your public testimony, sir. Thank you so much. I appreciate your time. Thank you. So the members, please cast your vote, and we'll take a quick photo. Members, please cast your vote.
Councilman Austin. Councilmember Yoranga. Motion is carried.
All right, thank you. Supervisor, you'll join us down here for a photo with the city council, and congratulations, folks. Good work.
Thank you. Hello, Mayor Richardson, City Councilmembers, City Attorney, City Manager, and City Staff, and Supervisor Han. My name is Pam Chotswati. I'm a 20-year Long Beach resident. I live at the top of District Two in Zafaria neighborhood for the last 10 years. I'm also part of Project Dignity in our own McArthur Park. And I just want to commend you, and I support this item and the purchase of 702 Anaheim as a permanent year-round shelter. It's an action in the right direction for acquiring needed facilities to address homelessness. And thank you for the collaboration between the city and the county, which never happens. So thank you for that. I just want to say, please consider community programming outside of casework and job training emplacements such as peer-led support groups and programs, because it's often difficult to learn when you're in therapy or you're in rehabilitation while you're housed, let alone when you're unhoused. Peer-led groups have had evidence-based success more than its counterparts, and addressing these solutions at the root and core of this complex issue is essential. But thank you for your work. We are really grateful.
Thank you so much. Next is Gary Shelton, then Nat, then Alex.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of City Council. Before you tonight is an application for an entertainment without dancing, an entertainment permit without dancing for Kings and Convicts, BP LLC, Doing Business as Ballast Point Brewing Company. The establishment is located at 110 Marina Drive in the 3rd Council District and operates as a restaurant. Junie Salsito, our business services officer, will provide the specifics.
The business has the following valid ABC license type 01. Beer manufacturing, which allows for the brewing, brewing and onsite consumption of beer at the licensed establishment. It also allows for onsite consumption of wine. All appropriate departments, Health and Human Services, Development Services, Police, and Financial Management have reviewed the application and have provided the recommended conditions as contained in the hearing packet. The following recommended condition in Attachment A should be noted from the Additional Conditions section. One, entertainment activities can occur 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, and 10:00 a.m. through 11:00 p.m., Saturdays and Sundays. All outdoor entertainment shall be restricted to no later than 10:00 p.m., Monday through Sunday. Two, the permittee is required to monitor the outside patio area for any nuisance activity that could disturb the surrounding neighbors. This shall be done by utilizing security guards or employees. Third, the permittee shall develop, shall develop and maintain a plan to address neighborhood concerns related to the operation of Ballast Point Brewing Company, such as newsletters, meetings, et cetera. And lastly, the permittee shall not convert the restaurant or any portion thereof into a dance or nightclub. All entertainment activities shall be conducted in conjunction with regular dining or pre-planned banquet activities. A banquet is defined as a function held at a bona fide eating place wherein complete and substantial meals are provided to the persons in attendance by the management of the restaurant, restaurant, where the function is being held. Fast foods, snacks, and hors d'oeuvres shall not constitute a complete and substantial meal.
Junie and I, along with Commander Richens from the Long Beach Police Department, are available to answer any questions that you may have. This concludes our staff report.
Okay, thank you so much for that staff presentation. Let's go to, do we have any public comments? Okay, there are no public comments, so we'll take it behind the rail. Councilmember Duggan.
I'm supportive of this item, so, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Austin.
Well, if Supervisor, I'm sorry, I keep getting everybody mixed up. If Councilmember Duggan is supportive of this item, I'm enthusiastically supportive of this item.
Okay, well, that's great to know. All right, well, let's take this to a vote. Motion is carried. Okay, thank you very much. All right, let's go to general public comments, and if we can have you line up in this order. Chris Stewart. Chris, are you here? Adam Conney, Stephen Smith, Carl Kemp, and Lee Charlie. So Chris, Chris, you're up first. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Chris Stewart. I've worked for the city over seven years now. I come before you today, along with a few other class action members in the audience, to shed light on the class action lawsuit going on and that the city of Long Beach discriminates against its black employees. All we want to be, all we want is to be treated fairly. During my tenure, the city refused to promote me, underpaid me, and unfairly targeted me. I have seen many non-black employees not be advanced and paid fairly by the city, while the opposite is true for black city employees. These actions have negatively impacted my financial and emotional well-being. The city has made statements acknowledging systemic racism in Long Beach, yet leadership has failed to take meaningful steps to remediate racism with its own workforce and instead chooses to fight us in court. Soon after our lawsuit was filed in 2021, the city began to disingenuously implement equity inclusion programs, along with promoting a few black employees. What we are seeking in this class action is to be heard, to have the city learn how its policies and procedures suppress pay and career enhancement of its 800 black employees. We want to know why the city does not perform any racial analysis of its P30 out-of-class work appeals. We want to know why black employees are disproportionately placed in lower-paying jobs or are in positions that have less security and less room for advancement. We want to know why black employees are targeted for retaliation if they raise any concern about inequity or disparate treatment. Even after investing in higher education and obtaining certifications to become survivable candidates for promotions, black employees are intentionally overlooked for these opportunities. We remain stuck for years in antiquated job classification typically at the step, top step of our classification with no opportunities for career advancement. These years of low pay significantly impact our retirement savings, making us work well into our retirement years. Leadership should not try to sweep all of us, all this under the rug. These are citywide problems that have citywide solutions that will benefit all employees and ensure fairness and transparency. The city should not be trying to use legal machinations to delay or dismiss our case. The city should be engaging with current and former black employees to understand its blind spots and how it has allowed systemic racism to fester and go unchecked. I humbly ask all of you to consult your conscience and do the right thing, not just make statements to appear to be concerned. We are looking for real leadership to join us to solve longstanding problems that divide us rather than, rather than connect us. Additionally, to date, approximately almost a quarter of, three-quarters of a million dollars has been paid by the city for legal fees to fight the class action. This money should be spent on improving policies that produce unequal employment opportunities for black city of Long Beach employees. The city of Long Beach needs to more adequately value its employees. In addition to a desperately needed citywide cost of living increase, Long Beach needs to invest in racial equity in its workforce. Black city employees, like myself, have been undervalued, underpaid, underpromoted, and underprotected for far too long. According to the 2018 Workforce Demographics Report, 65% of cities, of the cities' black employees make under $60,000 compared to 34% of white employees. I'm asking you to add a workforce racial equity audit to the budget. We need to rectify racial inequities and compensate the countless black employees.
Thank you, Chris. Your time is up. Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Okay, next, Adam Conney.
Hello, my name is Adam Conney, and I am a resident of Bixby Park. This is my 42nd birthday and will be my third homeless. Before I begin, I would like to reiterate my caution for speaking here because of the retaliation and difficult treatment I have endured. The amount of anxiety, stress, and physical discomfort to speak here today is tremendous because of the backlash I fear for my case at the multi-service center. When I ask simple, specific questions, I am told I'm being hostile or combative. Simply asking for a form, I was told that I had strike one. When I asked the supervisor to elaborate, it was, in her words, "It's three strikes in my book, and you're out. Your case will be closed." My first visit to the MSC was on February 1st. I was told by the hospital social worker after a serious trauma that that was where I was to seek housing assistance. I was told specifically to ask for the Long Beach Pilot Housing Program. I was told, when I arrived, I was told there were no more caseworkers for the day, and that if I wanted a caseworker, I needed to be in line by 4:00 a.m. to be seen. I let them know of my medical issues, open wounds, need for assistance or accommodation. I was told none would be made. My jaw, my jaw was wired shut, and it Okay, thank you very much. All right, let's go to general public comments. And if we can have you line up in this order. Chris Stewart. Chris, are you here? Adam Conny, Stephen Smith, Carl Kemp, and Lee Charlie. So Chris, Chris, you're up first. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Chris Stewart. I've worked for the city over seven years now. I come before you today, along with a few other class action members in the audience, to shed light on the class action lawsuit going on and that the city of Long Beach discriminates against its black employees. All we want is to be treated fairly. During my tenure, the city refused to promote me, underpaid me, and unfairly targeted me. I have seen many non-black employees not be advanced and paid fairly by the city, while the opposite is true for black city employees. These actions have negatively impacted my financial and emotional well-being. The city has made statements acknowledging systemic racism in Long Beach, yet leadership has failed to take meaningful steps to remediate racism with its own workforce and instead chooses to fight us in court. Soon after our lawsuit was filed in 2021, the city began to disingenuously implement equity inclusion programs, along with promoting a few black employees. What we are seeking in this class action is to be heard, to have the city learn how its policies and procedures suppress pay and career enhancement of its 800 black employees. We want to know why the city does not perform any racial analysis of its P-30 out-of-class work appeals. We want to know why black employees are disproportionately placed in lower-paying jobs or are in positions that have less security and less room for advancement. We want to know why black employees are targeted for retaliation if they raise any concern about inequity or disparate treatment. Even after investing in higher education and obtaining certifications to become viable candidates for promotions, black employees are intentionally overlooked for these opportunities. We remain stuck for years in antiquated job classification typically at the top step of our classification with no opportunities for career advancement. These years of low pay significantly impact our retirement savings, making us work well into our retirement years. Leadership should not try to sweep all of this under the rug. These are citywide problems that have citywide solutions that will benefit all employees and ensure fairness and transparency. The city should not be trying to use legal machinations to delay or dismiss our case. The city should be engaging with current and former black employees to understand its blind spots and how it has allowed systemic racism to fester and go unchecked. I humbly ask all of you to consult your conscience and do the right thing, not just make statements to appear to be concerned. We are looking for real leadership to join us to solve longstanding problems that divide us rather than connect us. Additionally, to date, approximately almost three-quarters of a million dollars has been paid by the city for legal fees to fight the class action. This money should be spent on improving policies that produce unequal employment opportunities for black city of Long Beach employees. The city of Long Beach needs to more adequately value its employees. In addition to a desperately needed citywide cost of living increase, Long Beach needs to invest in racial equity in its workforce. Black city employees, like myself, have been undervalued, underpaid, underpromoted, and underprotected for far too long. According to the 2018 Workforce Demographics Report, 65% of the cities' black employees make under $60,000 compared to 34% of white employees. I'm asking you to add a workforce racial equity audit to the budget. We need to rectify racial inequities and compensate the countless black employees.
Thank you, Chris, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Okay, next, Adam Conny.
Hello, my name is Adam Conny, and I am a resident of Bixby Park. This is my 42nd birthday and will be my third homeless. Before I begin, I would like to reiterate my caution for speaking here because of the retaliation and difficult treatment I have endured. The amount of anxiety, stress, and physical discomfort to speak here today is tremendous because of the backlash I fear for my case at the multi-service center. When I ask simple, specific questions, I am told I'm being hostile or combative. Simply asking for a form, I was told that I had strike one. When I asked the supervisor to elaborate, in her words, "It's three strikes in my book, and you're out. Your case will be closed." My first visit to the MSE was on February 1st. I was told by the hospital social worker, after a serious trauma, that that was where I was to seek housing assistance. I was told specifically to ask for the Long Beach Pilot Housing Program. I was told, when I arrived, I was told there were no more caseworkers for the day, and that if I wanted a caseworker, I needed to be in line by 4:00 a.m. to be seen. I let them know of my medical issues, open wounds, need for assistance or accommodation. I was told none would be made. My jaw was wired shut, and I was communicating with them by written notes at the time. It was all up to me to arrive and secure a caseworker, so I prepared. I gathered the items I could for comfort, a chair, snacks, warm clothing, gloves, batteries for my phone, and such. I got in line at 2:00 a.m., and I was the fourth person in line. During the night, many fights broke out with people trying to get close to the front of the line. I was personally assaulted and almost stabbed by a person trying to get to the front. At the opening of the MSE, they stated that each worker would only take five new cases per day and eight old ones. This day, only two people arrived for work, so only 10 cases would be seen. There were over 500 people in line. While waiting at the MSE, other workers and security guards took it upon themselves to remove people they saw as a problem. I witnessed a person who was visibly having a mental health moment and suffering from some disorder be removed from the MSE, their number taken away, and escorted out. I didn't speak up because I could clearly see that it would negatively affect me. The person appeared to have Tourette's. But this is when things got really scary. Those who were outside were told that all the caseworkers were full for the day, and those in line would have to return another day. Chaos ensued inside and out. The MSE knew this would happen based on their reaction. The main doors were closed before the announcement was made and did not reopen until the melee had stopped. People scrambled who didn't have a number. A woman saw that I had a number and lunged at me. She attempted to take my slip as she approached, and she reached in her bag, and I could see she was pulling out a large pair of scissors. When I informed the woman at the front desk, she told me, "Well, then, you better leave," as she said, protected behind glass. During my initial call, I asked about the pilot program and was immediately told not to ask about that. The response was, "That isn't for you. How do you know about that? You shouldn't be asking about that question." About that.
Mr. Conny, your time is up. I do appreciate you being here. I know that you've talked into my staff several times. Is there someone from staff, Assistant Manager Tatum, that can talk to you? So once you go over, and they're going to chat with you. Appreciate you being here, appreciate your comments. Okay, up next is Stephen Smith.
Vice Mayor, councilmembers. I have a friend last night during the car chase over here. He found a gun off the freeway, okay? He came, I was his homeless advocate, he came talking about it. He didn't know what to do with it. He wanted to sell it. I said, "Well, you know, it's best to turn it in." So we contacted the, I called 911, then LAPD in Long Beach came up, and we turned the gun into him. I'd like to see him get some kind of certificate for being a good Samaritan, maybe get some housing fast-tracked or something. How do I go about it? He didn't have to turn the gun in. LAPD in Long Beach took the gun willingly. They appreciated it as hell. I'd like to see him get some kind of good Samaritan certificate or something. Most people don't turn in guns like that, especially people who live along the riverbed. They're going to try to keep them. How do I go about getting a recommendation for him to get a certificate?
We'll have someone from PD speak with him.
So also, why don't you just go over, and we'll have someone from PD speak.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. Okay, next up is Carl Kemp.
Good evening, Madam Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Carl Kemp, and I am here today to thank you for your support for the Long Beach Juneteenth celebration. The day is almost here, and I really came to thank the mayor, members of the City Council, for your generous support and for your historic attendance at the event. I want to give a special thanks to Councilwoman Mary Zindejas, who's been supportive from day one and hosted us in her district since we were on Pine Avenue, and we've grown from 2,500 folks to a much larger crowd over at the Rainbow Lagoon. And we really appreciate your support from the very beginning, as well as the generous support of Councilmember Al Austin, who was one of the first people I talked to about the event, who lent his advice and support to the event, as well as Mayor Richardson. They've shown up huge with financial support every year, as well as many of you behind the rail. I really appreciate every single one of you for everything that you've been able to do for this event. I want to thank all the city departments that helped make this event a success, especially the folks in special events. Leah and Tasha are fantastic. They walk us through the process and make sure we check all the boxes to make sure we have a safe and productive event, as well as our Fire and Police Department. Our police community van was a big hit last year, but what I'm really looking forward to is seeing Haas and Marshall do the wobble with the crowd. It's a real crowd. Please, they get the party started. How much time I got? Minute thirty. We're very blessed to have many partners in the community, primarily responsible for funding this event, including the CV, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, the Port of Long Beach, Long Beach Unified School District, Boeing, Amazon, Target, Antioch Church, Catalyst, Collective, and United Healthcare, and so many more, including, again, many of you behind the rail. Finally, I want to thank all of the volunteers that make this event happen. Many people in this city believe that this is a city-produced event, which I believe speaks to the quality of the production. And while we get support from members of the city, it is the dedication of women and men, all of whom who have taken time from full-time jobs from a variety of professions, who sacrifice their time and tirelessly contribute their talents because they believe in the beauty and the power of celebrating black culture with joy and dignity for all who love it. It's a blessing to be able to bless others, and this event could not happen without them. So I hope to see all of you out at Rainbow Lagoon this Saturday from 10:30 to 7:00 p.m. We will have a fantastic show lined up for the community with everything from African drums to dance, step shows, gospel concerts, jazz groups, funk bands, and of course, the legendary Kelly Price, our headliner. So I'm looking forward to seeing all of you there. Thank you all very much for your support. And again, hopefully you get there in time to do the wobble with Haas and Marshall. Chief Burford, hopefully you can make it out for that, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. It's an incredible event, and I know we all look forward to it. Okay, I'm looking for Lee Charlie. I don't see him here. So that will conclude our public comments, and let's go to item twenty-five.
Communication from Councilmember Duggan, Councilwoman Zindejas, Councilwoman Supranaw. Recommendation to request City Manager in coordination with the City Attorney and City Prosecutor, return to the City Council in 30 days at presentation discussing policy options related to unlawful uses of public spaces and public safety concerns.
Okay, Mary Zindejas.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I co-sponsored this item along with Third District and Fourth District Council members, Christina Duggan and Daryl Supranaw, because homelessness in the city is a citywide issue, and it is important that we all work together on finding solutions. This week, we have some key people unable to be here, including our mayor, City Manager, Chief of Police, and staff from our homeless division. It is important that everyone is at the table to have this discussion around the intersections of public safety and homelessness. In addition, I feel it is extremely important for these key people to be able to be here, to hear from our residents directly. Therefore, I move to motion that this item be, that this item on the floor be moved to next week's meeting for June 20th.
Okay, Councilwoman Duggan.
The city has invested significant resources into building housing and expanding service for our residents experiencing homelessness over the last couple of years. And with the state of emergency, we've continued to invest more and more into this crisis. So I think we need, I think we understand that people need job training and placement or mental health services.
Councilwoman Duggan, I think we're talking about the continuance. Are you seconding that?
I am.
Okay, yes. Okay, so we're going to move this? We have a motion to?
And I've seconded it, and I wanted to complete my thoughts in support.
Okay, go ahead.
I brought this item forward because I think we need to take a serious look at what cities are doing to promote usable public space, spaces that are safe while not criminalizing someone's right to exist. We want to have an open discussion with all of our residents while learning about what has been successful around the country. I am supporting Councilwoman Zindejas's motion to continue this item because I think we can find balanced policies that can be agreed upon throughout the city, and we need to have all of our city leaders at the table when we start this discussion. Thank you, Councilmember.
Okay, so we have a first, and we have a first and a second to continue this item to next week. So are there any public comments on this item? Okay, there's no public comments. Okay, let's vote.
Motion is carried.
Okay, very good. Okay, item number eighteen.
Report from financial management. Recommendation to receive and file the fiscal year 2023 mid-year budget performance report citywide.
Okay, let's see, one second here. Okay, we have a report on this?
Yes, we have our Budget Manager, Grace Yun, who will give a presentation for this item.
Thanks, Linda. Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. This is a mid-year report of potential FY23 year-end projections. This report is based on early estimates from departments and citywide revenue analysis, which we know can vary sometimes significantly by year end. Actual year-end status will be reported in our annual year-end performance report that comes to City Council in February. First, I wanted to provide some context on the general fund. The city began the FY23 budget development process in the spring of 2022 with the preliminary projected FY23 structural shortfall of about 12 million. The budget was then adopted in September with a projected structural shortfall of about 11.1 million, excluding the impact of the Measure M litigation lawsuit at about 8.5 million. When that's included, the structural shortfall was projected at around 19.6 million. Additionally, the budget included about 9 million of one-time uses. Both the structural shortfall and the one-time uses were slated to be covered with funds made available through the Long Beach Recovery Act and other reserves. Then in March of this year, staff presented to City Council the fiscal outlook and an update on the FY24 budget development process. The most significant part of this forecast update was the major recalibration of revenues to eliminate any remaining pandemic impact on the projections. Overall, revenue projections for FY24, we reported improved by 40.1 million compared to previous projections. For FY23 year-end projections, staff is anticipating a similar recalibration of revenue estimates, with over 40 million of revenue projection improvements compared to the adopted budget, excluding Measure A revenues and revenues from land sale and settlement proceeds. Additionally, the budgetary impact of significant vacancies throughout the city, first seen last year in FY22, is continuing or projected to continue into FY23. So all of these factors combined have resulted in an FY23 year-end projection of 20.5 million surplus in the general fund. The majority of these funds are recommended to be prioritized for highest priority projects of the mayor and city council, including homelessness and housing, public safety, economic development, as well as other investments in infrastructure, parks, neighborhood livability, and other critical operation requirements. The city manager will propose specific uses as part of the FY24 budget for mayor and city councils' consideration. This report also provides notable updates on other funds. For example, Measure A is projecting an operating and net program surplus of 11.1 million, with 7.5 million of these funds being allocated for uses as part of the proposed FY24 budget. The Thailand's Operating Fund section discusses the impact of the higher oil prices than assumed in budget, which results in a projected surplus, with 11 million of those surplus being earmarked for critical projects to be proposed as part of the FY24 budget. Again, all of these projections will be revisited again at year end, and additional decisions can be made at that time, depending on the final outcome and fiscal status for the year. So that concludes my staff report, and I am available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Uringa. Councilmember Rick Sodi.
No comments. Just thank you for all your hard work.
Perfect. I just want to say that I'm excited to see that all the departments are projected to end their year-end budget as under budget, so that's good news. I also want to point out that our TOT revenues are anticipated to exceed average pre-pandemic levels, and this is fantastic news. So just as a reminder, Long Beach is a destination city, and we should continue to invest in our tourism sectors that bring more folks, convention centers, concerts, and entertainment to the city. So this is all great news. Thank you for that report. Okay, let's go to a vote.
Sorry about that. Councilwoman Austin.
Thank you. And I just had really one, couple of comments. This is welcome news. It looks a lot better than what was projected, obviously, a year ago. You know, it was pretty dire a year ago, and we've seen some significant turnarounds. What do you attribute that to? Is that mostly the market or just super-conservative projections a year ago?
Yeah, that's a great question. It's a combination of a couple of things, the majority being that post-pandemic, we had projected revenue estimates to continue to start from the base of where it had been hit during the pandemic and then slowly recover over time. So that's where our projections had been forecasting. What we have found is in FY21 and FY22, now that we have those actuals under our belt and can look at the trends from those fiscal years, the revenue impact that we anticipated has not occurred. So in fact, many revenue streams have bounced back up to pre-pandemic levels, as we mentioned, the TOT as well. And so what we are doing now is catching up in one year, the revenue to be at that higher base, and then in the out-years, we'll be growing at a normal, steady pace again. So there's this one year where we're doing a significant catch-up, so to speak, of the revenue projections that had been adjusted during the pandemic. The other factor is that we are seeing unprecedented vacancy levels throughout the city. And so while it is a positive thing, you can say that departments are not coming in over budget, it is an indication that there are some strain in terms of capacity in hiring for our positions, and that the fiscal benefit of that is that we are seeing savings, but eventually, we do want to be able to fill those positions, and those savings will be ongoing.
So thank you for the explanation. Obviously, you know, while this is good news to have, understanding that we won't have to look at major cuts, we are still operating somewhat at an inefficient deficit with employment, staffing, as well as, you know, other factors. And so I would love to be able to take credit for, you know, the council making some great decisions and turning a budget around, but that wasn't the case. I think it was just some factors that have been beyond our control. But I think we still need to be prudent. Looking at the one-times as well, I just, I'll just speak for this council member. I think we need to be very cautious moving forward as well, because those are not sustainable projections or figures to be able to budget on year after year after year. And we've been able to really be fortunate with the one-time expenditures, revenues coming in and year after year. But I want to just be cautious moving forward, just looking at the economy and how things are working out in other cities across the state. So, thank you.
Okay, that concludes council comments, so let's go to the vote.
Motion is carried.
All right, item nineteen.
Report from financial management and utilities. Recommendation to adopt a resolution approving a change in the index rate for the natural gas purchase revenue bond series 207B issued by the Long Beach Bond Finance Authority citywide.
Okay, I need a mover and second. Okay, and any public comments on this? Nope. All right, and then we have a report from financial management.
Yeah, we have our Financial Management Director, Kevin Riper, who will give a really brief presentation. brief presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Assistant City Treasurer Jesse Ortega will describe this highly technical but important interest rate setting and index action to help reduce interest rate differential risk on gas prepay bonds sold by the, I think it was called the Gas and Oil Department back then, sixteen years ago.
Jesse?
Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council, on May twenty-fifth of this year, the Board of Utilities Commissioners authorized and approved a resolution to change the index rate on the LBBFA series 2007B bonds and its related interest rate swap to ensure that the bonds and swap reference the same index rate. So, this item before you today is also making that same recommendation. Currently, the 2007B bonds and the interest rate swap that it's related to both reference a three-month LIBOR rate. And as you may already be aware, LIBOR will cease to be published on June thirtieth of this year, so we will need to update these documents to make sure that the bonds and swap continue to reference the same index rate. There is fallback language that was created by the federal government and also by ISDA, which is the International Swaps and Derivatives Association. But the municipal bonds fallback protocol would revert to a SOFR rate of three-month SOFR, and the ISDA protocol would call for the swap to transition to a daily SOFR rate. So, because there is the difference between that three-month and the daily SOFR rate that didn't exist in the original structure of these bonds, we are asking that the documents be updated so they will continue again to match the same interest rate as it was originally structured and intended to work. So, with that, you know, we would ask for your support on this item. And that concludes the staff report, and we are available for questions.
All right. Well, thank you, Jesse, for that report. I don't see any questions on our end, so let's go to the vote.
Motion is carried.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, item twenty.
Report from Health and Human Services. Recommendation to adopt specifications and award contracts to first-to-serve and interval house to provide operation and supportive services for homeless prevention and rapid rehousing in annual amount not to exceed seven hundred eighty-seven thousand sixty-one and seven hundred eighty-seven thousand sixty-one, respectively, citywide.
Okay. Councilman Austin, do you have any comments?
I move to support.
Zindeh Haas?
I enthusiastically support. As Councilmember Austin.
That is awesome. I love this attitude today. Okay, are there any public comments? Okay, let's go to a vote. Vice Mayor Allen? Oh, never mind. Motion is carried. Okay, item twenty-one.
Report from Parks, Recreation, Marine, and Public Works. Recommendation to authorize City Manager to execute an agreement with the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development Community Development Fund to accept grant funds for the Silverado Park Playground Project in the amount of one point five million, District Seven.
All right, Councilmember Yuranga.
Very happy to support the title.
Me, too.
All right, me, three. So, are there any public comments on this? All right, let's go to a vote. All right, thank you very much. Item twenty-two.
Report from City Attorney. Recommendation to declare ordinance relating to the Senior Citizen Advisory Commission name change to Advisory Commission on Aging. Read the first time and later for the next regular meeting of City Council for final reading, citywide.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Are any public comments? Okay, no public comments. Okay, let's go to a vote.
Motion is carried.
Okay, item twenty-three. And before we do that, Rixody, go ahead.
Yes, I need to recuse myself from this item as part of the deliberations when this ordinance was being crafted.
Okay, thank you very much.
Item twenty-three is a report from Development Services. Recommendation to declare ordinance amending the Long Beach Municipal Code to implement amendments to the noise ordinance, read and adopted as read, citywide.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Any public comments? We have none. Okay, let's go to a vote.
Motion is carried.
Okay, so we're on to new business. Okay, item twenty-four.
Communication from Councilwoman Sorrow. Recommendation to increase appropriations in the General Fund Group and the City Manager Department by six thousand nine hundred, offset by the six council district one-time district priority funds to provide contributions of five hundred dollars to the N C N W, five hundred to Partners of Parks, two thousand five hundred to Love Beyond Limits, five hundred to New Hope Academy of Change, four hundred to the African American Cultural Center, and two thousand five hundred to special events and filming.
All righty, I have a first and a second. Any public comments? All right, let's vote.
Motion is carried.
I keep on going back to the screen. All right. Okay, we're at general public comment number two, and there are none. All righty, well, we're moving right along to announcements and adjournments. So, let's start with Councilman Austin.
Thank you so much. I'd like to just report that my office is partnering with the American Red Cross in an effort to increase the blood supply for sickle cell patients. You can receive a twenty-dollar gift, Amazon gift card this Friday by donating blood at the Expo Arts Center from nine AM to five PM to help save a life. Sign up at redcross.com and enter the event code, District Eight, under the Find a Blood Drive link, or you can call our office at five six two five seven zero one three two six. Also, join us this Saturday, ten AM to seven PM for the city's free Juneteenth celebration taking place at Rainbow Lagoon Park. Headlining this event is the R and B legend, Kelly Price. It's going to be a great day, a big family reunion, and a great day to celebrate culture and freedom, an important point in our American history. And then finally, we are working with Help Me Help You in partnership to give out free nutritious groceries and Father's Day gifts this Saturday, June seventeenth, from twelve PM to two PM at Perry Lindsay Academy. For more information, please contact my office at five six two five seven zero one three two six. Thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Zindeh Haas.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Councilmember Austin, for the shout-outs for Juneteenth this coming weekend. I'm so excited. Hope to see everybody there at the Rainbow Lagoon. I would like to invite everyone to attend our second annual Independence Dog Parade in the First District at Lincoln Park. This family-friendly event will be taking place on Saturday, July first, from ten AM to twelve PM at Lincoln Park. Join us in honoring our Long Beach vets and pets. Applications for our dog participants are now open. Contact my office at districtone@longbeach.gov for more information. I'm also proud to sponsor our 2023 Wilmore Slam event happening on Saturday, June twenty-fourth, from five to eight PM at Caesar Chavez Anthem Theater. I invite you to attend this free and beautiful family sing-along event in the First District. Again, contact my office at districtone@longbeach.gov for more information. I also would like to invite you to attend our arts, culture, and tourism community celebration taking place on Tuesday, June twentieth, from two PM to three PM at the Civic Center Plaza, four eleven West Ocean Boulevard. Join us in celebrating the new committee with music, poetry, art, culture, and again, contact my office at districtone@longbeach.gov for more information.
Thank you. Councilmember Rixody.
It would help to put on my microphone. I would like to invite everybody out to the DeForest Park Neighborhood Association meeting this Thursday, June fifteenth, from seven to eight-thirty, at the DeForest Park Clubhouse, which is six two five five DeForest Avenue. If you'd like more information, you can contact my office at districtnine@longbeach.gov. And the next Thursday, we are going to be hosting our second quarterly Coffee with a Cop, Thursday, June twenty-second, from ten AM to noon. We're going to be at the Starbucks at thirty-five oh three East South Street. Looking forward to seeing you all. And again, if you have questions, please contact districtnine@longbeach.gov. Thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Sorrow.
Thank you. So, it's a Juneteenth weekend. After you go to Colorado Lagoon, you, on Saturday, come on Sunday to King Park. There will be a Father's Day celebration as well at King Park from nine AM to three PM. And then, there's going to be a neighborhood cleanup and ice cream social hosted by AOC seven at eight-thirty AM to eleven-thirty AM on eleven seventy-five East Eleventh Street. Thank you.
Councilman Supranaw.
Thank you. Tomorrow, Flag Day, I'll be at Prisk Elementary for the Altro essay contest. The next day, Thursday, the fifteenth, is the first Nature Center concert of the year. If you've never been to one, please stop by and enjoy that. On Friday at three-thirty PM, we have the ribbon-cutting grand opening for Apu's Cafe near Palaverdy and Sterns. And on Saturday, we have Pet Supplies Plus. It's kind of an event where we have animals for adoption, but please step, go inside the store and check out everything they have available at Pet Supplies Plus. That's it. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, and I hope you all have a wonderful rest of the evening. And this meeting is now adjourned.